All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session. Yes, ma'am. All right, Commissioner Hambrick brought a very sensitive subject up for us to give recognition and do where it's needed. We had a firefighter, Lieutenant Viesley, Lieutenant, right, to pass away. And what I would like to do is just ask on his behalf for a moment of silence, but I'm gonna ask everybody, please stand and recognize him. Thank you, and please keep the family in prayer. All right. Are there any items on the preliminary agenda for next week's BOC meeting that a board member would like to discuss?
Can I, I'd like to add an item, Mr. Chairman.
Add item?
I would like to have Ms. Christina Pearl from Elite Scholars. She did a beautiful poem at the Board of Education meeting, so I'd like for her to come here and do that poem for our next meeting.
Well, that's on the, that's not discussed here, but to your point, that can be done.
Okay.
Because it was, it was very nice.
Also, I'd like to give a shout out to one of our board members. She just celebrated her 20th birthday.
Of course she has.
Ms. Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
It took you coming on the board for us to know when her birthday was. Very secretive.
All right, are there any?
Well, I have something we have that's on the consent agenda.
Well, it's not on any agenda, that's just the items that were discussed. Or, yeah, I guess it is, they do have it showing up.
Yes.
Okay.
Something about the, oh, yes, number seven, the Clayton County Extension Requests for Supplement. If we would put that on the regular agenda for discussion. I mean, I don't know what that's about.
Consider it done. Any others?
I would like to recognize on this day really quick, as I was reminded today while we were at the Capitol, that our very own representative of the GDOT, which is Georgia Department of Transportation, the first female, not just African-American, but the first female to serve on that board, is none other than our representative, Dana Lemon. And I think it's significant on this day, that's an International Women's Day, that we recognize that, and we heard from her today at the Capitol. So, we would definitely like to have that into the record in celebration of her work that she's doing, and especially working to keep our citizens safe on our roadways.
Which board is that?
GDOT.
I thought she's been on the board.
Yeah, but she was the first African-American, first woman to be on that board, and today is International Women's Day.
Okay, because she's been on there, what, 12 years?
Now, she's been on there a long time.
Well, we're gonna recognize her.
Yeah, yeah, that's the fact.
No matter how long.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, first work session discussion item is countywide trash initiative. Mr. Stanford and Mr. McTarko.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. We have the pleasure today to kind of give you an update on the collaborative work that has been taking place with a multitude of departments and Jacobs Consulting as it pertains to our Clayton County Solid Waste Program update. Those departments, I want to recognize, prior to Mr. McTarko coming forth to kind of give you an update, we've had our Warden Corrections and Code Enforcement have been part of those discussions, Police Department, we've had Transportation and Development, we've also had our Chief Staff Attorney's Office involved in those discussions, Central Services, and we got to query the room to make sure I didn't forget anybody. But those groups have been, been meeting bi-weekly to kind of come up with a game plan to provide to the board, so we're pleased to kind of provide you an update this afternoon about the progress that we're making, and then answer any questions the board may have. So, thank you.
Good evening. All right, we, we, the group COO Dietrich Stanford just described, we started in January, having a kickoff meeting, trying to decide how we were gonna go forward with procuring the services. And after much discussion, we decided we landed on going out in a two-phased approach. First of all, would be a request for qualifications out to the vendors who might be willing to bid on this. We debated if we wanted to go directly out to RFP, and how we would define the program. Some of the things we have to do along the way is develop an ordinance to support this, what will tell you what the residents' responsibilities are, the haulers' responsibilities, and in the county's responsibilities. We felt it was best to use the RFQ process to try to ask leading questions of the vendors for them to disclose to us kind of their methodology, their best practices that they've seen in other organizations, other government entities that they serve, to help us craft a better program from day one that is more solid and will provide us what we need going forward. So, that's, that's where we are at right now. We started developing the RFQ for the process. It will be a mandatory response. We want to have serious contenders who are going to give us insight into their plan. Like I said, we're gonna ask them leading questions. How are you gonna service this area? How are you, how many trucks? How many providers do you have? Give us your experience, other locations that you've provided this type of services. If we were be contemplating add-on service, like a backdoor pickup, a senior service discount, how do you do this? Give us some insight so we can take that information and probably come back to you with some questions or clarity about what you want included in the program, but how to structure it from day one so we can get a even playing field when we do release the request for proposals later on. We're gonna try to assess their financial capability. Are they, do they have the EPA or EPD permits in order to be a certified hauler, so we're in compliance with the state in what they require? So, this, this is the first step along our, our journey in this process. We are hoping to garner that information in the next couple of months from them. Working with Central Services right now, they're expecting later this month to release that RFQ out to the general public, in approximately a month's timeframe, et cetera, for them to respond, some Q and A back and forth, and then we will have to have an evaluation committee at the county, since it's a request for qualifications, to evaluate it. And the idea is not, we're not gonna pick candidates, we're gonna qualify a group of contractors who are capable of delivering the services. Then, as you can see on, on the slide, we're tentatively, Ms. Rogers has identified the first meeting in, the first work session, I believe, in June, maybe it's the, it might be the business meeting, yes, for approval of, of the RFQ, what, the awarding of the pre-qualified firms. That's gonna, while we're evaluating that, we're gonna start the preliminary ordinance development that has to be codified at some point in this process. We're gonna start developing the RFP as we get out through this, and after we move on to that next stage and get direction from, from this board about what's in and what's not in the program, then we'll proceed forward with the RFP later on, late summer, in the fall time is kind of a target right now for us. Keeping in mind, the, the overall target was initially brought forward to you is approximately two years. We're gonna try to cut it down where we can in certain areas, but the RFP process is gonna be a, a, a very lengthy process, and keep in mind, depending on what decisions we make, once that's awarded, there's gonna be a ramp-up period where possibly all the cans have to be manufactured and distributed to all the addresses that they're gonna have to serve. So, there's a lot of, of time in there that we've incorporated into that two-year type of estimate, going back to when you gave direction to proceed forward. So, that's, that's a quick summary of, of where we are and kind of where the next steps are.
Board, I would only also add, here's a more detailed timeline of the RFQ process, if you want to delve a little deeper into what Central Services is doing. Of course, we gave you a cursory view of what those dates and times were, but that's kind of giving you a more detailed timeline as to what the process will be as we go through the RFQ process. So, with that, we'll answer any questions the board may have about this process.
Well, the RFQ process will be able to give us more specific answers to our questions.
Yeah, yeah, we can then ballpark what, what might be a projected fee in charge based upon the service that they're providing. We know that the board has been asked by many of our citizens about costs, and even in our queries and conversations with the public, we've communicated that this board has given operations the charge to come back and bring forth information. So, clearly, once we bring back additional information to give you a ballpark through the RFQ, what those costs may be, then the board will make a decision about, you know, does this seem to be within the, in the timeframe and the ballpark from a cost perspective? Or, if it's not, then what might be some alternative funding sources to kind of defray some of the costs back to respective resident on that respective call? So, the goal is to get more information, provide it, you know, from the RFQ, and then the board can make some additional decisions about next steps.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Hambrick?
Do you know how many haulers we'll have?
We don't, we do not at this time, Commissioner. I think part of the RFQ process, we contemplate that if you were to serve a district, and we've been able to provide some estimates on how many households or many, you know, residents that would potentially be per district. So, the request will probably run the gamut from looking at it per district, or worst-case scenario, if you had to take care of the whole county. So, we'll give it, get an opportunity to get costs associated with district as well as the county as a whole.
Yeah, and simply because some of them will not be able to meet from a capacity standpoint, you know, to cut down that number greatly probably, as to who wants to apply or submit for the RFQ.
Well, how will they know? Well, I guess maybe it'll happen in the RFP.
It would. So, the scope would kind of outline what we've projected between the Chief Staff Attorney's Office and Community Development. We're able to kind of look at all the unincorporated areas and how many households that would incorporate. So, we've been able to provide some of that as part of the preliminary information in the RFQ.
How will they know if they want to apply if they can't provide for the whole county?
Right.
Or they can't provide for a district?
And another great part about that is that, as you see in the detailed timeline I've provided to you, there'll be a Q and A session with those respective vendors. So, anything that's still a little ambiguous potentially in the RFQ, I'm sorry, in the actual scope of work, then they'll have an opportunity to pose questions back to the committee so that we can provide clarifying answers to whatever those questions might be.
Well, will you have it in there? Well, will we have the ability to have the plastics and bottles and?
Recycling.
So, yes.
Yes. Back to Director McTarko's point earlier, that we'll run the gamut, so it might be base services upfront, so if you ran your services two days out of the week to pick up from a household, but it may go as deep as looking at white goods, looking at recycling. So, they'll provide us a, a, a scale on costs. So, vendor A comes in and say that, yeah, our base cost is this amount, but if we add enhanced services, then here's the cost for that. So, we're able, we'll be able to provide you apples to apples based upon what the respondents are putting out.
And days of the week, you hit on that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
How many days of the week? Okay. That's it?
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. For me, and I'm not looking for the answer today, but for me to begin to move this forward, I would need to know what the costs are, who, who the vendors are, the number of vendors we have, the service method, as far as the resident's freedom of choice, are we allowing them the freedom of choice to choose their vendors, as well as the billing method, and the customer support arm to begin to handle this? Will that be counted, or will that be vendor? You know, I know those, you can't answer those questions now, but for me to move forward with this, these are just some of the points that must be addressed in order to move, for me to move accordingly to address the citizens' needs.
Yes, sir. So, I would just only add, the qualitative part that you put in certainly would be all part of the RFQ, so, you know, what would be the potential cost based upon these number households? I think, however, the policy question as it pertains to whether or not it's mandatory or not, this board will have to make that as that determination. But we'll certainly provide information, so therefore, we're providing you as much information as possible to be able to make an informed decision.
Well, I said that's all, but one other thing, and I guess somewhere in the talks and all among the...
The committee?
Committee, or whoever.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe even with the commissioners, some kind of, I guess, a place for complaints or inquiries if someone, you know, if citizens have concerns or whatever, who, will they go to when they come past? Will they go to the vendors?
The initial discussion, we talked about a while back, was that, through the kind of franchise agreement, that it would be a total turnkey. So, those respective haulers would have to provide that they have a customer service arm to be able to address complaints and concerns from the citizens with regard to that. However, we thought it was important that we still had someone in space that we can monitor those questions and concerns, even though they might go directly to the hauler to provide that initial complaint. So, what we heard loud and clear that this board brought to the table was that we, we may see the value in them handling the customer service piece, but we want to be intimately involved and ensure that we're kind of taking on those complaints as they come in.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How, how are we involved in our refuse control and code enforcement in this process? Because I see Gordon Nelson back there, but I believe they presented us with a presentation that actually gave us a model that we could follow from Gwinnett County. So, I'm hearing a lot of us reinventing the wheel, and so I want to know how are we involving them?
They're part of the, they're part of the committee. They're part of that committee.
Committee?
The, yes, ma'am. They've been part of the RFP process.
And how much of that information are you all utilizing? Because it sounds like you all are starting over in some instances.
Maybe I'm not understanding your question, Commissioner.
We were provided a presentation directly from that division on how to make this work, how to make it successful. And there's a Gwinnett model. There are other models that have worked, DeKalb County. How are we utilizing those models as opposed to going through this totally blindly and trying to figure this out on our own?
So, what we tried to do is, and modeled the best practices from some of those municipalities. They, we actually got information from them about the RFQ process opposed to the RFP. But as it pertains directly to code enforcement, we're running two parallels. The first part of the RFQ is about getting calls from the haulers. What we're also doing, working through the Chief Staff Attorney's Office and Refuge Control, and, well, importantly, Code Enforcement, to talk about how do we enforce this once the haulers come on board? So, we're running, we're still having those discussions, that's the reason why we're doing the bi-weekly meetings. Now that we've kind of gotten some guidance from the board around the RFQ, now the process will be to talk more about the impact on how do we enforce these policies, infinite in fact, the board decides to move forward with this process.
I'm gonna ask Gordon Nelson to come forward, please. Thank you so much. So, Gordon, within the process that's been submitted to us, do you see that this time period is actually conducive or in sync with what's been presented from Gwinnett or from DeKalb? Or is there a way that we can shore this up a little bit?
As far as the timeline, I'm not sure whether we could speed it up because of what the COO mentioned about what it's gonna take for the company, whoever the company's gonna be, to produce the garbage cans and get all that put out to everybody. We've been more in a, in a supportive role on the, on the committee, just adding in information and participating. The code enforcement aspect of it would be the ordinances that would need to be developed when there's a problem with, with those that did not get the garbage picked up, that leave their cans out for so many days, and things like that.
I know previously you all shared with us a means in which to even take the calls in, to be able to monitor that the service is delivered. Have you suggested that to this committee? Even though you're participating on it, I haven't heard that from you all.
We have not got to that point yet, as far as fielding calls, once all this is in place, the complaints. We have to, we have to develop that. We don't know how many calls would be generated. I imagine people will be complaining to others about garbage cans not being picked up, and I'm expecting that we'll probably receive a lot of calls either through Refuge Control or through Code Enforcement.
Let me ask you a question. Are we already not receiving those types of calls? But we're just not able to deal with them because we don't know what days our trash is getting picked up?
We are receiving some of those calls on a, on a isolated basis. We've had one or two people that continue to call when garbage cans are left out for a long period of time, and we go take care of that, we handle it on a code enforcement basis. The only time Refuge Control would get involved is if we have to push that into an abatement or a forced clean. But lately, it's been pretty quiet. We did have, we did have a couple of regular customers that, that didn't...
I think, yeah, I think I've shielded you from some of them calls. We've gotten quite a few lately, in District Three.
About the garbage cans left out?
Mm-hmm.
I, I know there's one in your district that complained quite a bit, but we haven't heard from him lately.
Okay. And then the other question I have for you, though, is in regards to the program itself, can you share with us, as you did in your previous presentation, as to the benefits of taking this whole challenge on versus continuing on in the way that we're doing it now?
As far as...
You gave a presentation some time ago.
Some time ago.
And at the end of the presentation, y'all left with a little, little figure about mass trash pickup. So, what are the benefits?
Well, the benefits are, we hope that people will be less likely, those that do not pay for a garbage pickup, to keep them from dumping it on the side of the road. And, you know, we are constantly finding regular garbage as well as trash and debris on the side of the road. Our Code Enforcement officers and Refuge Control will take open the bag and try and find out whose garbage it is, and we promptly cite them as soon as we find out. So, Code Enforcement's been pretty busy with that lately. If they're gonna dump their trash on the side of the road and it's, there's information there, we're gonna find it. And they'll go through the entire bag, and really, that's, that's a lot for Code Enforcement officers and, you know, people to have to do, but we're doing everything we can to try and stop it. We're putting trail cameras up wherever we have dumping areas. Unfortunately, that doesn't work all the time because, for instance, like Grant Road, if, if somebody dumps trash on this end of the road and we put a camera up there, then the next time they dump it on the other end of the road, where we don't have a camera. But we do have them, if we do have habitual areas, we, we do put the cameras up there. We also are working with our local business owners that do have cameras too, that can share that information with us, residents and homeowners also. And we've recently cleared some pretty good cases of trash being dumped behind a, a commercial area because of cameras.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the work y'all do, too. Appreciate it.
They, they do great work.
Yes, they do.
They work very hard, I'm proud of them.
And before you leave, I just want to say thank you for the work that you all do. I've been out there with you all, and we've, I've seen you go through those bags, and a lot of times, it's people that live right here in Clayton County, and two miles away from where they just dumped their trash. So, again, thank you for the work that you all do. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I, I really do believe that once this is taken care of and trash has to be picked up, we're, we're gonna see much less incidence of this happening. I'm very hopeful that that's the case.
Oh, we are, too.
Yeah. And, and another thing, you know, as we go through, you know, we'll, we'll talk about keeping Clayton clean and continue talking about that, go through our school systems, talk to our students as well, and make it, you know, and, and just make it something that we do throughout the county. So, I appreciate, again, everything that you all do and have done.
Of course, we wanted to be involved in that during the...
Great.
During the pandemic, but they were limiting who could come into the schools, and hopefully that's gonna be lifting here soon, and we'll, we'll be able to put together a good program.
Great. But in all fairness, Commissioner, we need to know, and you come from the school board, because I got two in the school system, they do talk about it all the time, and it's in their science program. So, it's not something that's coming from the county, but the school system talks about it. They deal with it. And as well as the water authority, I participated in those cleanups with the water authority. So, just because we don't have the title of keep Clayton clean does not mean that the efforts are not going forward. So, I just want to give you kudos in your current position, in your previous position. So, but we gotta get this trash picked up, and we're gonna move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Y'all have a good night. Thank you. All right, next is 12-hour shift proposal, Chief Merkison.
Excuse me, can I ask a question regarding the amnesty program this weekend? I just want to know the location for District Two. It, it gives the address of the library, but I can't find it. I'm thinking it's that parking lot between the library and the senior center.
It is, it is.
I just want to be sure.
You turn in the library, it just continues straight up, the top of the hill will be on the right side, and then traffic can turn around in the rest of the parking lot.
Just want to be sure, that's what I was saying this morning to them. Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. I haven't received a response from you all. I, I've seen the signs, they're really nice, and the work that's gone in is good, but I did send an email asking that particularly for District Three, that a sign is erected for those locations. And I even talked to Commissioner Anderson, who's, who actually, you know, came up with this idea too, to make sure that in those districts that we're advertising on that street sign, only those local locations. What we don't want to do is make the problem worse by having folks think they're gonna truck trash across the county, because that's what they do, as you and I both know. That's why as soon as y'all cleaned up 1941, it was a mattress on the side of the road. That's why the officers and deputies were telling me they had to pull somebody over where a refrigerator fell off. So, it's important, as opposed to putting every location in the district on a street sign for people to read, please make sure that each commissioner has their specific locations. That's very important. We want to be as effective as we can in this and not make the problem worse.
Commissioner, I responded to your email.
Okay. And I was at the Capitol today, if I missed it, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Also, by the same token, though, I don't understand why we would not put all the locations, because even if somebody is traveling through District One and they see the sign, where they live in, hold on a second, and they live in District Three, then they would go back home and know that this is the location or the date for it. I don't understand. It's countywide initiative as opposed to just an individual location at one spot in each district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I don't understand, as a previous chief of police, people are only gonna be able to read so much when they're driving, and they just can't see it. Y'all did an excellent job. It's not sliding you, you did an amazing job. All I'm asking is, on that particular sign, do the two locations. All the commissioners have sent out all the locations. We continue to do that. But when you're talking about signage, it's visibility and being able to read it. We're not able to read the fine print, it's just functionality. Simple as that. It's not a slight to you, not a slight to the staff. Functionality.
Didn't take a slight, Commissioner?
I figured you did it.
So, if the pleasure is for us to change those signs out, that's not a problem.
Thank you so much.
It's this week.
What'd you say?
It's this week.
Is this it?
Yeah, it's this week.
It don't matter, change them in District Three. It don't matter.
Anyway, let's move on. Chief?
Yep.
You can answer it anyway, can't you?
All right, board, we come back before you again. One of the things that this board continues to ask us to do is be innovative in our space and figure out ways that we can bring back new proposals, especially in light of the fact that we have some departments in some areas of our county, it's hard to retain certain employees. Chief Merkison will come, come before you this, tonight, to kind of talk to you about a proposal and potentially a pilot program around a 12-hour shift proposal with his men and women in this department. And so, I yield a microphone to Chief Merkison to give you some more details about this program.
Thank you, Mr. COO, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. February 10th was the last staffing update that I sent the board, which the purpose of that email was to inform you of a couple paramedics that had chose to resign our organization and move on. So, I outlined kind of what the corresponding impact to our operations would be given those two departures. In that same email, the, the question was posed to me kind of by Commissioner Franklin, what would we need to do to think kind of outside the box and look at ways to attract staffing or find some organizations to help us attract staffing? So, what my staff has done is we've gone back and we've gone through the exit interviews from those paramedics. It's kind of what we focused on, because that's what's affecting our service right now. We, we focused on that, and since those two left, we've had two more that have left. So, we looked at what they told us versus what our previous ones told us, and there was one consistent theme, which is... what our previous ones told us. And there was one consistent theme, which is, we just worked too long. The 24-hour shift is no longer conducive to the jobs that we do. Back in the day, 15, 20 years ago, when call volume was down, there was a better than average chance you slept at night, even though you're working 24 hours a shift. That's no longer the case. Our employees are actively engaged in the performance of their job duties up to 20, 21, sometimes 22 hours out of a 24-hour period. They eat in their trucks. You know, they try to get a little rest here and there where they can, but they're functioning at max capacity for 21 and 22 hours a day. And then most of them leave here and go work a second job or a third job on those two days off and then they come back in already tired. So what we're seeing is the chance for errors to increase and it's the fatigue that's just wearing them slap out. So we started asking ourselves, typically when we look at it, historically, we've looked at it from the lens of, well, the only way we can do that is to change the number of hours that we're, and we, not really a lot we can do about that. But we changed our mode of thinking and we said, well, let's go figure out a way to do something about that. So we figured out a way to morph what's typically a law enforcement schedule or dispatch schedule into the fire service. It's typically not done. It's never been done, but we're gonna give it a shot. So, or, you know, that's why I'm coming to you. Because so far, it's out. We've queried our employees and the response has been overwhelmingly positive as to, they just want to know more about the, about the program and the process. It's also now hitting other municipalities. Henry County's reached out wanting to know how we're going to do it and how we're going to structure it. We're not saying anything until we get it worked out and structured, because some of their employees are calling us as well. But, so why are we doing it? Rising call volume is leading to burnout and fatigue of our employees. That burnout and fatigue leads to the increased likelihood of human error. Due to fatigue, we're asking them to perform life-saving tasks as if they're fresh as a daisy right out of the bed. And sometimes that's on call 16, 17, or 18 at four in the morning when they've been up all day. They're extremely highly trained professionals, but you can only ask an individual to do so much. Our two most recent paramedics that left, these are direct quotes from their exit interviews. The 24-hour shift is outdated. They were leaving to go to Piedmont for a 12-hour shift and a better work-life balance. Another employee told us they would stay if we offered a 12-hour shift. He loves the organization but cannot continue the daily grind of working 24 hours nonstop. So, why the fatigue, right? Why, what is it about the fire service and how we function that's, that's getting them to this level? Well, it's very simple. So back in the 90s, the Fair Labor Standards Act passed an amendment to the Fair Labor Standards rules called the 207K exemption. Basically, what that does is for employees, and it only applies to firefighters, that are employed by a public organization. So essentially, what that allows the county to do is, the average county employee works on an 80-hour biweekly schedule. They're gonna work 160 hours in a 28-day cycle. So the county has chosen an FLSA period of 28 days. That's our work period, which means our overtime is calculated at the end of the 28-day period. So if you've had any time off within that 28 days, any hours over your work schedule or not overtime, they're just additional regular pay. Well, FLSA added an exemption that says governments can now work firefighters up to 212 hours within that 21, within that 28-day cycle. So the average employee will work 160. That's your normal county employee will work 160 hours before they're eligible for overtime. Law enforcement, you can work them up to 171 before you have to pay them overtime. Fire employees, you can work them up to 212. Why did they do that? Because that facilitates a 24-48 work schedule, which facilitates a biweekly pay schedule, which is what the county's on. So if you're gonna pay your employees every two weeks, 26 pay periods a year, 24-48 is where your meat and potatoes are. It's how you can staff your organization with the least amount of people possible, because it only requires three shifts to do it. But you gotta work them a lot more. We work, as I said, a 24-48 on a 28-day work period, which means that you gotta hit 212 hours before you're paid overtime. To reduce overtime on this schedule, we give what's called a Kelly Day every third month, and I'm fixing to explain that. This is where you lose a lot of people when you talk about our pay and how firefighters get paid, because it's crazy. But essentially, we work a quarter rotation, right? So this rotation occurs four times a year. So let's just use January, February, and March. So we're gonna work 216 hours in January, 216 hours in February, and then we're gonna work 240 hours in March. So we've already talked about that anything over 212 is overtime, right? So every month, we get four hours of either regular pay or overtime, depending on whether or not we've been off. Well, that third month, you're gonna work 240 hours. So rather than the county paying overtime for that 240, they just give the employee the day off, which knocks them back down to 216, and now we're just back down to four hours of ad reg or overtime. So that's why you'll hear some of our employees talk about it's a forced day off or a unpaid day off. That's what they're referring to. It's not really, because it's, it's calculated and their, their pay schedule is based off a 216-hour pay cycle, right? So it's not an unpaid day off, but the county chose to set it that way to save 24 hours of overtime every third month times 130-something employees, right? So it's a cost-saving measure, but it gives that employee some extra time off. Okay? So that's how we've gotten into this predicament with fatigue as call volume has gone up. We've done nothing to change the work schedule from when they maybe ran five or six calls a shift. Now they're running 30 and 40 per station. So we're, we're averaging close to almost 200 runs a day across the department, which is record pace. And we haven't added stations. We haven't added units. We've added some people here and there, but not really enough to substantially make a difference in that, in that fatigue. So here's, here's, here's how this works out. And these are some stats that I think become important as we look at benefits, pay, and the downstream effect on firefighters and EMT. So 90% of the county, 75% of the county workforce is on an 80-hour norm, right? That's, that's kind of how payroll classifies them. So for our firefighter paramedics, which is one of our struggling positions right now, they make $53,245.58 a year. This is prior to the incentives that are coming in March and July. The average employee on an 80-hour work week, I have some firefighter paramedics that are administratively assigned, so they work an 80-hour norm. They're gonna work 2,080 hours a year. Okay? Their pay period is 80 hours. Their pay rate is $25.60. That same position that works a 24-48, they make the same money, but they're gonna work 2,808 hours a year. Okay? Their pay period is on a 108-hour norm, which means they work 216 hours in the 28-day cycle. And we have to reduce their pay rate down to 1,896 an hour, so they make the same thing, but keep in mind they're working more hours. So what's the impact? So a 108-hour employee will work 728 hours more each year than their 80-hour counterpart. What that equates to, if they just work to minimum retirement at 25 years, they will wind up working 6.48 years longer to get the same retirement benefit. So when we talk about where does the fatigue come in, that's it. So over their 25-year career, they will work six and a half years longer than the average employee because of the schedule that we put them on. So what are we gonna do about it? So I, I convened a, a team with the blessing of the COO. It was myself, the COO, the CFO, the deputy CFO, human resources, and my staff. And we started trying to figure out, how can we put one or two of our med units on a 12-hour schedule and let's run it for six months and see the, the impact, the net effect? What does that now mean for our employees? So essentially, what we're wanting to do is create a new norm, which would be an 84-hour norm. Okay? This means they would work 168 hours within that same 28-day period as opposed to the 216 that they're working now. That would mean they would equate to 2,184 hours if this was a full year, which would take that six and a half years longer down to .84 years longer. So we're drastically reducing the amount of hours that these individuals would work within that same 12-month, 26 paycheck pay period. And then you could kind of see the adjustment in their pay that we would do to make sure that everything stays equal across the pay grade, because they all have the same responsibilities. They take the same tests, have the same requirements, so pay needs to be the same. But we can adjust the hourly rate based off of the schedule that they work and that's, does not violate FLSA whatsoever. So what are the benefits to it? We firmly believe it's gonna try, help us attract a greater pool of applicants thereby increasing our staffing numbers. We fully expect to see a reduction in employee fatigue, increased retention, decreased hiring costs, and decreased overtime costs. So keep in mind, right now, when we solicit overtime, we're asking you to come work another 24 hours. Well, that's either gonna come on the tail end of you working 24 hours, or it's gonna be the day before you have to come back and work your normal 24-hour shift. We don't allow them to work the 12 hours preceding their normal shift time, because we want them to try to be fresh as possible. So it's nearly impossible to get them to come in and volunteer to run another complete 24 after they've already been up for 24. It's just, it's, it's not a safe thing to do, but it's a necessity at this point. So we believe that going to the 12-hour shifts, if we need overtime, it's only for 12 hours. It's not the full 24. Our employees will be home either during the day or at night, which will help with childcare issues, you know, any other type of issues that they have. So it will kind of increase that work time and, or that, that work-based balance. And the shift that we're proposing is, the chairman I'm sure will be familiar with a pitman, which most law, a lot of law enforcements that run 12-hour shifts use a pitman. So it takes four teams of two to do it, which works out great for an EMS unit, because we have two people on our, on our transport unit. So essentially, you have a day shift and a night shift and they're on alternating schedules. So under this model, no employee will work more than three consecutive days in a row. So as you see here, if you're assigned to Team One day shift, let me start where it makes sense. Or let's work Team Two on night shift. So they work Monday, Tuesday. They're off Wednesday, Thursday. They work Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then they're off Monday, Tuesday. They work Wednesday, Thursday. And then they get a three-day weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So the primary benefits of this particular schedule is the employee gets a three-day weekend every other weekend. They're off Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And they never work more than that three-day stint. But like I said, if they're on day shift and they're at home at night, sleeping in their own bed, being able to be with their kids and their family, then they can kind of pick their days or their nights, whichever schedule. So we firmly believe it would make a huge difference. As I said, we're simply looking to run a pilot for about six months, I think is what the CFO wanted us to run, so we could really take a look at the financial benefits, the annual leave savings, sick leave usage, get a good grasp on what it looks like. And then if we choose to expand this further, then we can sit down and take a look at what that financial implication may be if we look to flip the entire EMS side. We're focusing on EMS right now. We believe trying to flip the entire department to this is a little aggressive at this moment and would require a lot more staffing considerations, but we really want to focus on our transport units, because that's where we're seeing the heavy burnout and that's where we're, we're in our staffing crisis right now. So that's the long and short of it. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you, you may have.
Any questions?
You answer my questions. I just want to say thank you. I thank you for the job that you all do. Or in the words of our COO who loves his work, the yeoman's job y'all do. You all do an amazing job. I think that unfortunately, people really don't understand how much of a benefit having the level of folks that you have on your team make a difference. Now, I'm gonna take a moment and I'm gonna tell you that number one, I support the 12-hour shift. Number two, this is just the beginning. We got to get you to money. I remember right before my mom passed, I called you and I could not get her transported in enough time back up north to the Emery campus, because she was in a adjacent county. I won't call the county. And I was trying to figure out a way just to get her across the line into Clayton so that we could transport her. And I think the citizens need to understand, there is no other county that you can go to where you can name your hospital where you want to go. And that makes a difference, especially when you're caring for somebody, that it means a difference between life or death and getting them to the level of care that they need. Henry County does not have a Level One Trauma Center. They don't. Clayton County unfortunately does not. Certain level of care has to go to other counties. It just is what it is. It's a regional thing. It's nothing against the county. But yet and still, Clayton County has continuously said, we will drive you. And so for you to bring this forth and say, you know what, we're gonna figure out a way, that even though we have not approved the number of, of, or the amount of raises that we really need to retain people while they're delivering these calls, or for you to come back and give this to us as an option, that is huge. And I say thank you from the bottom of my heart, from the bottom of my heart and my family's heart. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to, are we the first in the country to do this or just the first in Georgia?
There's probably a, a half a dozen variations to our schedule. Out in California, they do some, they do some really crazy things out there. Most people that change fire department schedules, don't cut them in half. They double them. So most of the time, you'll see them go to a 48-96 version where they, they mandate that you work 48 hours straight. And then you're off for 96. There's versions of 24 on, 24 off, 24 on, 24 off. Then you work 24, then you're off for 72. So it's, but most of those require that you go to a four-platoon system instead of three, which is what we have now. So you'd essentially be asking the Board to approve another 130-something positions for fire, which we know the village won't support. So there's no sense in looking at, at those types that's gonna require you to have a four-platoon type system. To my knowledge, there's not another, you know, this, this is common in private EMS, but private EMS can't work their people 212 hours either, because that, that, that FLSA exemption does not apply to them. It only applies to employees that are engaged in public fire protection. So the only public fire protection that exists are county-level services. So really, that was a carve-out that was put into FLSA for county governments and government agencies to be able to maximize their work of their employees, so it, it, it plays nicely with the biweekly pay schedule. So it's, I'm not gonna call it a benefit, because it's not, but it, it, it functions for 24-48. So to my knowledge, there's another, not another government, especially fire-based EMS, that's looking at running 12s, just because it gets complicated. Like, we're having to work with human resources and finance to go create another pay scale, essentially, is, is what we're having to do. So a lot of folk just don't want the headache of trying to figure out how to make it work. But you have two choices right now. You can figure out how to make this work, or you can start shutting down units. It's, the, the choice is yours. The question is, call volume's not gonna stop.
Nope.
So just because I send this Board an email that says, I don't have enough paramedics to run that truck, nobody tells the citizens, hey, don't call 911 between these hours. We still gotta provide a service and, and we do it. And we do it extremely well. But we gotta figure out a way to fix it, so this is not an issue, so that I'm not coming before you saying, hey, you know, I, I don't have enough people to fill the billets I have. My, 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 my ask of you wants to be, hey, I've got more applicants than I have billets. Can we add an additional truck? Can we add this? I don't ask you to add units now, because I know the first question you're gonna ask me. Well, how are you gonna fill it if you're running 35 vacancies? Fair statement. Makes sense. I'm hoping this fixes that. And, and if at least the chatter that's going on right now is indicative of it, I think it will. It's just a matter of, can we beat everybody else to the punch and get it done, which we have a history of doing and we plan to do it this time too.
When we, when we get it started, it seems like, it seems like a consensus yet.
So we're, we've worked through the scheduling on our end. So our next move now that, that I've brought the Board in the loop on what we're doing is to sit down with the human resources side and the finance side of Munis and build out the schedule. And Munis, the good thing is, the 911 center runs a 12-hour shift, so some of it's already built. It's just a matter of transitioning it over. I'm going to be holding a series of meetings with my employees, probably starting in the next week or so, to give them the details of the program. And then once we identify the core group of employees that we're going to flip to this schedule-
How many is that?
We'll be looking at, if we do one truck, that will be eight total employees. If I do two trucks, it, it'll go in numbers of eight. So we're also running another pilot program simultaneously with this one, looking at doing some basic life support type stuff for our non-emergent calls. So we've got, we're juggling a lot of balls right now with trying to figure out how to fix this issue that we're seeing. But my goal is to do a minimum of one. If I have enough participation, we'll do two. Because I believe that'll give us a bigger pool to figure out what's gonna be the net savings and net benefit. So if we choose to do this across all 14- So, if we choose to do this across all 14 transport units that we currently have, when I come back before this board, to be able to do that, I wanna have numbers for you that says, "Here's the reduction we've seen. Here's now the interviews that we've done with these employees, how has it improved their work-life and their home balance?" A, a, a lot of what we get from our people outside of the fatigue is their family don't like who they are anymore because of how they come home, and that's an issue. So, we're hoping this fixes that.
So, is it voluntary, or, because you said if you get enough participants?
It is voluntary. I mean, we're not gonna mandate that, that, did you go from 24 because we hired you to work at 24-48. But, I don't think we're gonna have any issues because last I checked, I had over 100 and something responses that were sent to me directly. And some of them were speaking on behalf of their entire crew, saying, "Hey, my whole station wants in." So, we're not gonna have a problem finding eight or 16 to do it. It's, it's just gonna be managing the, the expectation of how fast can, can we potentially expand it. But, we wanna make sure we go slow because we are doing something that we haven't done since we started providing service in 1967. We wanna make sure we do it right. We wanna make sure that it's manageable so that we don't run into pay issues, we don't run into accrual issues, we don't run into some of the other things that if we jump out there too fast, too big, too quick, we don't want it to derail itself. So, we wanna make sure we get it right. And the COO, the CFO has laid out a brilliant plan for us to, to kind of transition and built it. They've supported it fully, Ms. Ambles have supported it fully. So, the next step is, let's go find our eight or 16. Let's get some names assigned to some trucks and do some tests to make sure that the pay transitions, the accruals happen, and then we'll flip the switch and go live, and we'll see what happens from there.
So, you think maybe this fiscal year, or?
Oh, yes, ma'am. My intent's to have this up and moving within the next month to two months at the longest. And then the flyer that you saw is what we planned, that flyer we plan on sending out. That's gonna be our new recruiting. You can see where we've added the next pay steps that come in as of April 1st, and then as of July 1st, and then we've thrown the, the new 12-hour shift opportunity. So, my other goal here is to look and see what kind of, what paramedics start looking to now come back to the organization or leave other services and come here because now they can get the both, the best of both worlds. They can still fight fire, which is what they wanna do. Plus, they can still get a 12-hour shift. So, are we gonna start pulling now from those private EMS services that were taking all of our employees because they offer 12-hour shifts and they can pay more? Do those, some of those start coming back home? So, if we start to get that influx of paramedics back in, then that may facilitate this moving faster and us coming back and say, "Hey, I've got such a demand now, I need to move it to a third, a fourth, a fifth, whatever the truck may be," so.
When you talk about the private EMS, can you let us know the other jurisdictions that utilize a private EMS? I think our citizens don't realize that not all jurisdictions have a county-owned EMS.
Their, fire-based EMS is a rarity these days. So, you have, in Metro, you have Clayton, Fayette, Henry, and Gwinnett are the ones that still have fire-based EMS. The rest of 'em, Cobb manages two private EMS services. I think Puckett and Metro still run Cobb. DeKalb has a myriad of, of different things that go on. Rockdale, so the vast majority of a couple agencies up in North Georgia, Hall County, is fire-based EMS, but it's, it's very rare that the county still provides that level of service to its citizens. And, you know, once you privatize your EMS, you lose control over quality of care, you lose control over rates, you lose control over a lot. So, you know, right now, this board that takes the level of service that we provide our citizens from a staffing standpoint, quality of care, of course, y'all still have full control over because you control me. So, you know, that, that's how that flows, but it's, it's a rarity, but it's, it's one of the best models out there because we're in the community.
And Chief, I just wanna say that as far as, you, you said something very important. When we look at our firefighters, we wanna make sure, again, like you were saying, with them working those 24-hour shifts, they're coming home, and their families are saying, "We don't know who we're dealing with sometimes." We have to work on our, the mental health of our staff especially. So, I just wanna say thank you for doing that because, again, you know, I know of firefighters, and I know of what they go through, and you all have, you all talk to the families, and you have the chaplains to talk to the families. But, we have to make sure that when they leave, they're not getting accidents. When they leave from that job, that, you know, we're protecting them as well as protecting our citizens. So, thank you so much for focusing on that for our, for our fire staff. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Chief, first, let me just applaud you on your innovation for moving forward with, with such a program. I think this is a time where you, we trust that you know what you're talking about. This is a board that I don't know if anyone up here is a firefighter, is, and knows more than you know on this. I think this is a time where it's time for us to just get out your way and let you go do what you do and bring us back to positive results. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I couldn't do it without my staff. They're, they're incredible, and sometimes I look at them and say, "Somebody tell me why we can't do it." And they're just like, "Well, let's just go figure it out." So, I applaud them as well, but I think our men and women are, are ready, and I think they at least deserve the effort. If it fails, then we're, it's gonna fail big. But at least we can look 'em in the eye and say, "We gave it, we gave it our best shot."
And I don't look at it as a failure, especially if we know why it failed. You can take it, basically reassess it, redevelop it, and, and push it out again. I think this is a way to begin to move forward with what you're saying. If this has been, if this old model has been in place since 1967, you say, yeah, we have to look at the dynamics of the county.
Well, that's when we started. It's, it's been in service for over 200 years. So, that's just when we began here in Clayton County.
Yeah, so, I mean, granted, I don't, I don't look at anything like this is a failure. It's a failure if we don't try to implement something to begin to assist our counties. The only thing you didn't answer, which, which for me, and I think I know the answer, with going, moving to a model like this, this is, I believe, is going to increase the quality of service to our community because of the rest that our officers are getting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, I, I believe instead of getting the, the six-and-a-half-star service they get now, that they'll get like seven-and-a-half to eight.
All right. Thank you.
So. You good, boss?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all you do.
Next up, nonprofit support presentation, Mr. Brookins.
I am not Mr. Brookins, but we certainly will set the stage, Chairman and, and Board. One of the things that we've also been looking at is, how do we continue to provide services to a lot of our NGOs, our nongovernmental organizations? And we always are asked to, to take on respective services. An example I always use is whether or not IT is providing services for Arts Clayton, whether or not building and maintenance is providing services for other needed services in the county. Fortunately enough, for our DA, who serves as the, the Chair of Rainbow House, is here today just to provide some support and ask any questions the board may have about their role and their interface with our staff. So, Director Hopkins and Director Brookins will kind of give you an overview of the services that they're providing for a lot of the nonprofits. Really, what we're trying to get clear from a policy lens is that, what level does the board like for us to continue to provide those services? In some instances, it's kind of been a little inconsistent, and so we wanna ensure that we get some guidance from this board with regard to, what's your expectation? We have certain organizations come to us to either utilize facilities, or they've been in facilities, what's the level of service we need to continue in that building? And so, Director Brookins will kind of set the stage, and then Director Hopkins will come behind it.
Thank you, Mr. COO. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, happy 20th birthday to you.
Who are you?
I must have seen you in a while.
It's been a while, yes.
We all pass, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, tonight, I just wanted to give you an overview of some of the nonprofit services that both Mr. Hopkins' shop and, and my shop is providing for a number of them. And so, you know, just overall, there's two different kinds of, of services that the county provides. There's, there's cash donation, which you guys approve every year in your budget through your list, through the collaborative. And then there's also the in-kind donation. So, these are, these are donations of staff time and other services, so anything other than cash. So, an example of some of the in-kind examples was if we provide computers or furniture, office supplies, tangible items like that. And then services can range anything from, some of the examples are like professional legal advice and administrative services and support, things like that. So, currently, these are the big five for us. These are the ones that we provide the most amount of resources to. And as Mr. COO said earlier, we, we do have an MOU that, that you all approved with Arts Clayton to support them, but the next four are, are big ones. And so, we, we spend a considerable amount of time at Rainbow House, the Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center, which is housed in the county building, the Clayton Center, and the Boys and Girls Club, half of the Flint River Community Center.
So, here's where I tag in, and Jason grew the beard so we'd look more similar for the presentation, and we are looking forward to celebrating your 21st birthday with you next year, Commissioner Hamburg. The organizations in question are in-county-owned buildings, and the point of buildings and maintenance being here is to maintain those buildings. So, our staff are obviously going to take care of the HVAC, the roof leaks, make sure the lights turn on, make sure the lights are changed out so the light bulbs turn on. Major renovations, if the roof needs to be repaired, we take care of those things because those are part of our assigned responsibility. Where we really start to run into a difference is when the user within the space has to put in a work order. And we put in, for last year, for example, we had 86 work orders at Rainbow House. So, that's 86 times a staff member had to move from doing a preventive maintenance or a maintenance within a county building that is being operated for a county purpose into one of these spaces. Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Crisis Center had 11. So, it's, it's variable depending on the department or the NGO, the nongovernmental organization that we're there, and then those asks are different. Sometimes they may ask us to come in and, "Hey, our program has changed. We need to change this restroom from being a men's restroom to a unisex restroom, so remove the urinal from it." Or, "We're going to now do drug screening, so we need to take out the toilet that's there and put in a toilet that doesn't flush with water because that can dilute the samples." So, it, it's a variable, and depending on the organization and what they need, we wanna be able to support it, but we also wanna make sure that we're being responsible with the county dollars. And I will tag back in Director Brookins.
And so, from our standpoint, we, we offer the same services that we offer at every other county department. We basically come in and fix your computers and your printers, your telephone systems we provide. If we're not providing the system itself, we are asked to work on the system that's in, in the space already. And so, additional items like additional wire runs in different places and the troubleshooting and repair of that. But also, we've had some recent requests that the buildings just aren't capable of supporting, which is access control and video surveillance, that the data, that's, the data network in there is just not capable of supporting that much traffic and throughput. And so, for us, we spend, this is, because they're not an official county department, we track how much time we spend in that, with, with them. And so, over monthly, on an average, we spend about 3.6 hours at Southern Crescent, 38 and a quarter hours at the Rainbow House, and then 22 hours at Art Clayton. And we'll have months, we'll go up and down, but that's just an average over the last quarter. And so, what we're coming to and asking you is for some, some clarity and some guidance on how much support should we provide, and how do we formalize it so that we can support them in the right way? And so, what we didn't wanna do, we wanna be careful at is, when you open this up, now you're gonna, you could have other ones coming, you need to support us, too, you need to support us, too. And so, we're looking to you, the board, to, you know, find a way to formalize an agreement with, with each organization that requests our help and then develop an, an application system so maybe there's others that you guys want to, to provide more assistance to can come in and apply for, for, for additional assistance more than what they have. And then, basically executing a lease agreement on the, for the organizations that are in our spaces for, for their space. And so, internally, after that, then it's on Mr. Hopkins and I's to assess our staffing levels to see, do we have enough to support the ask that we have now? Do we have enough funding? Do we have enough staff? Do we have enough resources to do that? And then, allow us to develop a system that we, we can regularly examine how much time we're spending there so we can figure out if, if what we're doing is, is what you guys desired us to do from a support standpoint. And so, I don't, with that, Board, I appreciate your time tonight, and we'll ask any questions.
Did I miss, did you say how many of these are county-owned buildings versus non-county-owned buildings? I'm sorry, I go to.
So, so these are, what Mr. Hopkins was talking about was, these are offices located in county-owned buildings.
All of them are county-owned.
Yes, ma'am.
For sure. I just wanted to know that.
And I see two different things here. Now, when you're visiting the buildings, IT, I mean, are those machines or whatever, are they county-owned, or are they owned by the people that are occupying the space?
They are owned by the people occupying the space.
Okay, and I can see where you come in because that's just like a rental, basically. You go in and, and if I'm renting a place, I need my air, I need my, so it's two different things. So, I think this is a concern to me with the IT portion.
Well, it's a concern for us because we don't know the, the caliber of the equipment that we're asking to be serviced, and so it could be.
And if you damage it, who, who's responsible? You know, not, I mean, I know you all are good, and all that, that would happen, but, well, I, I mean, it's just a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a, that's a good point, Commissioner. I think that it goes a little bit deeper than, I have a few more questions, I don't think we're gonna answer them here. But particularly with Arts Clayton, so we own the building. Arts Clayton, we own that building?
No, we, we do not.
Okay, that's why I asked the question, are we owning these buildings?
Arts Clayton is the only building we do not own.
Because I remember I voted against that level of support, and there was a reason. It wasn't because I don't support Arts Clayton, why would I not? I used to direct their arts programs. It was because of what you're seeing now, because we're going into a space not understanding the level of liability that we're assuming. So, Arts Clayton, we don't own the building, but we provide it with service, and we provide them with the phone lines for forever, even before we really did it. The other question is, in other jurisdictions, these level of services, would they be something that the county would own? And, and normally, is it best practices that we would have our, that have county employees in those spaces, or is it always been a nonprofit service provided?
You wanna?
So, twofold, Commissioner. To answer your question, yes. It varies whether or not it's county staff that's in the site versus the nonprofit staff. I think what we're trying to get our arms around, this would help, is that we're trying to figure out what does this board deem as the greater good for the community, and then trying to figure out what that return could potentially be when we're talking with these respective nonprofits. Example, Arts Clayton, when they came to ask about the IT support, they paid some commensurate cost to, to defray some of the costs associated with their service. So, when we entered into agreement with that, then we tried to ensure that there was a return. In some instances, there is not, either not an agreement in place, and we just wanna know from this board, what level of service does this board think we need to continue to provide because we know that they provide a greater service to the community, and I use a Rainbow House for example, that there is a, there's a service they provide for the betterment of the community, but we just wanna be in a position that if a like service come in and asks us the same question, how would we delineate between the two?
Well, I think it goes deeper again. The difference, well, you can't compare Rainbow House to Arts Clayton. Rainbow House is a necessity, we have to have it. I think there's some things that we have to have, and we have to provide a level of service, and if we don't have somebody on staff, then we've got to provide it. So, if it's not going to Rainbow House, it goes someplace else. So, I don't know that I would compare them to Arts Clayton. So, again, I think this is a deeper dive.
Yeah, and, and all due respect, Commissioner, I wasn't comparing the two. I was showing that we need to get a policy direction as to what level of service we wanna provide to those like services. Not necessarily Rainbow House to Arts Clayton, but just nonprofits as a whole, because we get a lot of requests from a lot of nonprofits about using our space, and we're trying to figure out, how do we make the determination whether or not it's something we wanna move forward with, or something that we wanna have the board vet.
I'm glad you said that. You can't put them in the same category. So, I think, again, it's a deeper dive. They're not like services. They may be nonprofits, but there are some, like, for instance, perfect example, we have to provide everyone with representation who does not have the ability to pay for an attorney. So, we pay for buildings around here for folks to be able to be in those buildings to provide those set services. There are certain levels of services that we are required to provide as a county, whether they're in county as an employee or outside the county. So, that's why, again, I don't think it can be answered here. I think the question you all are answering, asking is a great question, but we have to do a bigger dive of dividing and understanding what level of service is just by, we're just gonna help certain organizations or ones that we have to provide, no matter what. going to help certain organizations or ones that we have to provide no matter what. So, we got to go to a deeper dive. You can't, they're not necessarily like services, if that's the case. So, let's just do an offline conversation. I'll do my research, and then, I'll come back to the table for me, and then, I'll be able to have a more, a better conversation, and for me, because I want to do a deeper dive.
Mr. COO, do we have MOUs with all these organizations?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Because I was going to say, let's review the MOU.
And that was another issue.
But technically, even though you don't have an MOU, forgive me, Board, technically, you have something in place, because you are assigning people to these boards. So, again, it's not just on surface that we can just have this conversation. We got to go back with legal and really define these relationships. If we're appointing people to that board, then we got to figure out, what's the relationship to those said authorities and board, to our board? It's just not something we could just do a one cover-all. I just think that's more work. I hear what y'all saying. I'm sorry, I hear what you all are saying, but there's some more work that we've got to do to have a better understanding of those said relationships. These aren't just an organization as to, for a perfect example, one that we utilize to help us with housing, which I know a lot of people have had great services from, right there off of 138. But, we don't appoint anybody to their board, but we appoint people to the Arts Clayton Board. We appoint people to other boards, so we have to do a deeper dive. I don't have that answer, but I just want to caution us, I understand your need, I understand your concern, but I want to caution us of saying the words like "like" services, because we need to go into a deeper dive of understanding the connection of those said services to this board, so we understand our authorities and our responsibilities. That's all I'm asking for.
Commissioner, just, I have to, the only point I was making with like services, that they're all in nonprofits. That's the only, that was the only similarities.
I'm clear. Thank you.
What was your point?
Arts Clayton.
No, we don't appoint no Arts.
I don't know of any.
We don't appoint nobody for Arts Clayton.
We don't? We didn't appoint board members to Arts Clayton? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgive me. I said it wrong, because I was, it was Tourism Authority, and then, the previous person that was over the Tourism Authority get, I got it. I'm clear.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, you, what you're asking is this, you're saying if a Rainbow House comes in, and then, another person says, I have the same organization similar to that, and I need assistance as well.
Yes, ma'am.
What do I need to do as far as getting that same assistance that Rainbow House would get?
Got it.
Y'all, y'all...
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly.
So, I think that's what he's, that he's getting at, Commissioners. He's saying, let's say, you know, let's break it down, because there are a lot of, I'm just going to say, as a new Commissioner, a lot of organizations are reaching out to me, so I'm trying to get an understanding as well. So, they're saying, hey, I do this same service, Dr. Anderson, or Commissioner Anderson, how can I get the county to help me as well?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just, you know, like I said, I need a deeper dive as well, and I understand what you're asking. So, I think that's something too, that we're going to have to probably talk about in a retreat, or talk about offline as well, so I can get a better understanding as a new Commissioner, as well as the other Commissioners, so on how we can help these other organizations obtain the same thing as a Rainbow House, or as a Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center.
And then, I want to make a point. I'm really, honestly, as a Commissioner, I'm really concerned that the Boys and Girls Club is even on here. The reason why I'm concerned, number one, because that building's a brand-new building that we built, and the only thing I ask as a Commissioner is that we look at it from a board perspective, as opposed to doing the regular services that we offer in terms of sports, to do something, a deeper dive for the Boys and Girls Club. So, what we're offering to them, I tried to take everything off the table to you, I got your free computers, I got your free computer services. So, what I don't understand is if the building is leaking, is because we have not completed that process. So, I think that we need to do a deeper dive. I really do.
Madam Mosley.
Folks think you do their job.
Just one, to answer your question, there are two entities that I'm aware of that are certified by the state as your county representation. I think if that's the best word. You have Rainbow House and you have Securus House.
Thank you.
Securus House is for abused women. That is the state-recognized shelter. And Rainbow House is the state-recognized shelter for abused and neglected children for the, for the county. So, if anybody from the state is going to send anybody, it comes to those two entities. That's the only thing that I am aware of that separates us at this particular point, and it's the people with letters, OPM, OES, you name it, they're the ones that come in and say, you are this county's recognized shelter for abused and neglected children, and you are the shelter for abused and neglected women. That's, I think, where the distinction comes.
So, Madam, Madam DA, so you would say those two should not be in the same categories as they're putting them in as like? That's what I'm trying to get to.
As far as...
What we have to serve is no matter what.
I'm, you, listen, Rainbow, Rainbow House is different, and our sexual assault house is different from anything else, anybody else, because Southern Crescent handles adults and not children. So, we get all of the children, and honestly, we're getting people from other counties, too, to coming to Rainbow House, be it our sexual assault center or for housing. So, we don't sit in the same area or the same level as other people. We are twenty-four-seven, seven days a week.
Can I say, I think what I'm seeing here is that we have no formal categorization for any of these, even those that aren't here. And we also don't know all the variables needed to categorize these. I think that's the first exercise, is to take not only these five, but others that are out there that need it. I'm looking at, one, we have the physical maintenance, and the other one, we have the technology maintenance. Physical maintenance is going to take part at a whole different level than technology. I could go buy technologies today, and it could break tomorrow because of a virus or anything else that comes through. So, we have to begin to look at that. I think we've got to begin to look at any organization that comes in and begin to categorize it based on a level, not only of service, Commissioner, but also of level of need to the community. Well, hold on, let me finish. Prime example, we also have the Alzheimer's Center that I think is dearly needed in this community, and we've got to make sure that we begin to do something, and we're doing a level of support for them. So, it becomes to, we categorize and then, begin to predetermine what level of services are we going to offer to any of these? Is it going to be roofed? Is it going to be just AC and heating? Is it going to be service support or anything like that on the other IT? I think we've got to begin to go, before we can even look at these organizations, we've got to look at creating a strong level of categorizing all of these institutions.
And I think we're just talking, we all are saying the same thing. I think what you all have brought before us as an issue is an issue. But, again, to see all of these listed, again, Arts Clayton, let's start there, we don't own the building, you just said that. The other buildings, we do own. We got to do a deeper dive and do a deeper work assignment. So, not to go around, but I think you've got three people that at least agree to it. And then, again, we've got to add on what is necessary, not just needed, but as we were just talking about, the DA spoke about Rainbow House, if we're required to provide